All morning. We don't want to break out articles, that was called.
But you were agitated.
I'm glad you're.
That was on the way in.
There you are.
This is regular meeting of commissions court on Tuesday, 22nd day of February 2022, 9:30 a.m. County Court, Rimana Way, Texas. You all right? Let us bow our heads and pray. Our most gracious, heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day you bestowed upon us. Father, ask you to guide this court, ask you to guide our people within the county that we may best serve all of your citizens, Father. Father, ask you to put a hedge of protection around each and every one of us and our family, our friends, and let's be a prosperous year. We ask all these things in your son, Jesus Christ, most precious name, amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you.
On 3.3 Larry, come on up there. More. Uh, yeah, we'll go to it and let you guess, so hang on a minute, let me. 3.3 Discuss consider approving financial order number one from Texas material group for Chambers County, if unfortunate line bridge.
The bridge project required. The contractor hires a wall designer. The wall design, based on the information that's provided. In this case, the wall designer felt that the wall would be unstable unless they were to strengthen underneath the wall. Their proposal and their support for this. To HGF, if you're that in here. Extra money for strengthening the soil underneath the.
Thank you, Larry. Now, Larry, the only question I had is that seemed like it showed up late, so only reason I was asking about that. Understand the process, so.
The, we, we have been waiting on the contractor to provide his information, materials and labor, etc.
Larry, can you turn the microphone on, I can't hear you.
Alright. That's why it's been a while. The wall obviously is installed and put up, but we were waiting on the contractor to provide his information so that we could confirm all of the pricing.
Alright, I'm good.
Hi, entertain most. So, what's my question to us? What's my question, Hammond?
I think Mr. Hammond beat, uh, beat me on that judge, I'll second it.
No, he didn't, because I got too far.
Okay, you're right. My fault, he beat me dead.
Now, the questions, some favor, both, most curious.
I failed to introduce myself, Larry Moore.
Thank you, Larry. And you want to, you said there's another line closure you wanted to mention?
Yes.
Would you do that while you're with Mike?
The contractor needs to close the ITN main lanes as well as the front of drugs, but at different times. So I've provided a schedule for when the contractor proposes to close the eastbound and westbound main lanes. Please be aware that Text dot has not approved these lane closures yet, but we anticipate that they will. And the main lane closures are in March, so we have a little bit of time. I'll update the court if anything changes. Just wanted everybody to be aware, these landing closures are at night from 10 p.m. to 5 a.m. But they do cause a total lane closures for ITN.
Frontage roads are daytime?
Frontage roads can be daytime.
They don't have to be approved through text up?
Yes, yes, they had to be approved also. Anything to do with ITN, text on has to approve the length. Anything to do with ITN, Text dot has to approve the closure request.
Two of these are for today.
Yep, they start today.
Okay.
So, and that's on the front of drills.
Yes, front of road, yes.
So, um, are we still, are we on schedule with the bridge?
Yes. The current schedule contractor should be finished end of August, first of September, in that timeframe. Obviously, unless something happens to slow them down.
Alright, sounds good, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Right there. You know, oh, there's a ribbon cutting out there Thursday, did you get that phone? Ribbon cutting.
Hello?
Aren't. We make sure Dan and mom, anybody else that needs to be part of that ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting on what?
Ribbon cutting on fourteen oh nine, Lauren, ten o'clock. It's a door ribbon cutting, um, county and the city are, it's ribbon cutting for Perry, Gil Parkway, so it's ten thirty on Thursday. And it's gonna be at Gil Parkway or Perry in fourteen oh nine.
Remember the speed limit on fourteen oh nine is forty-five?
I remember that, I see the sheriff's light flashing at me over time I go down it, the sheriff, that is, that works.
Got me yesterday. I thought your machine was messing up at first.
Alright, thanks, Larry.
Alright, citizen's comments, AC Low, good morning, AC. Come on up, sir, take your name to the record, you have three minutes to make your.
Morning, neighbor.
That's a great word, thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good call. I appeared before you August the tenth of last year with, uh, I made a presentation or complaint or whatever about drainage. And I left some questions, and I want to read those questions today, I've not heard answered any of them, so I'd like to read them. I'd like to know what was the cost of the master drain plan prepared by Clots and Associates in twenty fourteen? To date, how many of the major projects listed in section nine point two point five have begun or been completed? My next question is, have the recommendations, recommendations therein been considered and relied upon in the approval process for new subdivisions and commercial developments? Next question, how much of the increased tax and tax revenues, bond funds, or impact fees collected in lieu of taxes has been spent on drainage progress, projects recommended in the Clot's report? To whom is the drainage easement on plot plans for the various subdivisions granted? Drainage from one subdivision flows into another through other, excuse me. Drainage from one subdivision flows into and through other subdivisions to reach a tributary. So it's segmented. Why are drainage easements required on subdivision plat, plats in Chambers County different in that they are, according to county engineer, granted to the HOA but still considered to be on private property? According to Chambers County subdivision regulations in effect until twenty twenty, under section N, line nine, all drainage improvements for proposed or dedicated to the public shall be dedicated on the plat as easements or, in fee simple, without reversion reservations or limitation. What does that mean? And in terms of, in returns of responsibility for the easements? Who is responsible for maintaining these easements? And what authority or responsibility does the county have in maintaining or verified they are maintained as engineered? Because they're not, not the ones that I'm around, or that my subdivision flows out and through. If the different subdivisions, HOAs, or individual property owners are responsible, what county department has responsibility and authority to force proper maintenance? If the county has response, is responsible, when will it begin? Hesse County has recently been awarded seven hundred and fifty million dollars in federal tax dollars for drainage improvements. Was Chambers County eligible for any of the federal grant money? And if so, did we attempt to obtain any of this money? Also, where can a citizen obtain access to the approved plot plans for the commercial developments? I called and, and the, uh, road and bridge department and asked, and they told me I had to contact the engineer. And it seemed strange to me, being as the, all the residential plots are, are posted on the website, you can pull them up and look at it. So, curious about that. Now, this is just another statement. The county may be able to legally maintain it has no responsibility for the segmented drain system it approves, but the county creates at least an ethical obligation to homeowners by approving plot plans for each subdivision with drainage requirements included. I mean, that implies that, that you're gonna have drainage. And right now, the drainage over, uh, Eagle Heights, through Katie's Creek, through, uh, Winfrey Oaks and through, uh, cellar station there is not maintained by anybody in anybody's backyard. There's trees growing that big around in the middle of the, of those easements. And, and if you call up here, you're told either it's HOA's responsibility or it's, it's a property owner. Well, nothing's happening. And after water gets in people's houses, it'd be too late. So, I'm just asking the county to look into it, do something about it before it happens.
Let us make a copy, that, Lauren, we make a copy of that so we get the court. Edit your person.
And the plot's plan, I'm, I've judged back for five years, I didn't find anything, Jack, I don't know what the plot.
Thank you, I think.
And I say, if you give me a call, I can talk to you about some of that stuff.
Okay, we're gonna get your phone up.
Uh, it's online.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Hi, Jean, Agent Forrest, good morning, Jean.
Good morning, Commissioner Shane, Judge, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf of the friends of the Chambers County Library System, as you can see, we have taken our hats off to y'all for your continued support of our programs and of the library system. Y'all know very well that knowledge is power, and what better place for our citizens to get this power but at county libraries? We thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Come on, Dan. And we tip our heads.
Always liked cookies.
Oh, you make me look too short.
Yeah.
Come on, Jonah. There we go. There's a chair in the way.
Move back, there we go.
I'll rearrange.
One, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you, appreciate you, ma'am, thank you so much.
Oh, how you help us?
That's true, I wish for a chat.
Alright, let's go to Valerie's item. Valerie Lewis, economic development tourism five point six. Discussing, consider approving application for hot hotel occupancy tax fund granted by NerdCon for seven thousand, grant by NerdCon.
Valerie. Yes, and this was under Samantha, so I'll gladly take it. Um, we're fixing to, pretty soon in a couple of weeks, start planning for NerdCon year five. And it's evolved into a great program, I know a couple of commissioners have come out to, um, the after-party to see what it's about, and we appreciate that.
Sounds good.
We had quite a few people, over a thousand people come out this past December, representing fifteen different counties. So it's growing, it's going fast, it gives us an opportunity to showcase the library, showcase, showcase the county and what we have to offer, so we're looking to ask for a couple thousand more than we did in the past, and hopefully grow it and have another great event.
Move for proof?
Check.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Hammond, any questions? What is NerdCon? Did Jay say that?
I did not. Uh, NerdCon is a family-friendly comic book slash pop culture convention where people come dressed up as Spider-Man, Captain America, whatever comic book character they like. And we have educational panels, we have celebrity guests, we had, I think, the whole cast of Dragon Ball Z that came out, and I think you were there with your kids. It's, it's fun.
I was thinking it was a commissioner commission. American.
We did have one come.
If I may point out, uh, one of the few that's on here that didn't have its, uh, its record by, in other words, laying out where the funds are coming from, it says hot tax. Uh, that was just an oversight, but, uh, we will make sure going forward, everything.
And this money goes to our friend's account, not a county account, so that's why, maybe that's why.
Well, it's okay.
Okay.
We'll get it right.
Yeah, George just called you out, so.
It's okay.
Alright, I get a motion, second, any other questions, those in favor?
Alright.
All those most curious, thank you, Valerie, thanks, Valerie. And thanks for the hats from the friends. Alright, back to. It's a drainage. Let's, let's hold off on that, because Cory's coming in, so, um, he should be here shortly. Or we check with him, check out postings. Alright, one point one, discuss consider approving order to increase the homestead exemptions to persons over sixty-five are disabled from sixty thousand to two hundred thousand. Aaron, this beer. Man can't control them anymore since you came on, monitor.
Person like to fish.
My words. Hi, one point one, Aaron. Thank you.
Called the plane, he couldn't find his helmet.
Uh, yeah, this is basically what happened last court, you all proved the, uh, homestead exemption from sixty to two hundred thousand, so this basically makes into an order and, and also clarifies, it also is for over sixty-five or disabled.
Disabled, right.
So he's wanting this, because if you had it both ways, it would be two different exemptions, it'd be confusing, and since you're just a, all of the ones, so.
Move for approval, Jay. Question by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tass, any questions? Those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial two point one, discussing, consider the general probation department's annual financial and compliance report for the year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I'll say, I appreciate Aaron jumping in there and his staff getting this done.
Yeah, I mean, uh, between Bess and, uh, Shnitra, they did a good job, so I think it came out well. Hopefully next quarter or so, we have the adult probation on next, so. Everything's looking pretty good.
So anything you want to say about it?
Uh, no, I mean, nothing's, nothing's pretty normal, nothing out of ordinary, so they do a pretty good job of handling their, their business, so.
So you need a motion to receive them?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
First by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Combs.
Yes, sir.
What's that say?
Yeah, I was, but I thought it hurt.
Any questions? Those in favor?
Alright.
Yeah.
Opposed, motion carries. Cory's on his way in, so we'll skip over road and grids. Five point one, discuss consider participating in the TDM FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Sam, is that an ARPA training, we can get her if we need her? If not, if you've had time to look at it, it's an emergency mode, shouldn't participate, it's a, it's an annual program. Just to hear some thoughts. So, I'll entertain a motion, anticipating the grant program. So, thank you, David. First by Commissioner Tass, second by Commissioner Combs, any questions? With the favors. Opposed, most curious, five two, discuss consider appearing grant management services for the TDN HMTPDR two eight eight five program.
These all go together, okay?
They do. The next one is for engineering, so.
Make motion on.
Five point two.
Yes.
First by Commissioner Hammond.
Check.
Taken by Commissioner Tass, those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, most carries, five three, is, uh, discuss consider procuring architect engineering services for the HMTP program.
So, move.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tass, those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, most carries. Five point four, discuss consider free nickels, we're gonna wait on court for that. You guys aren't a big hurry, they should be here shortly. Five point five, discuss consider permitting filming permit application by Kenneth Bennett's LLC from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
The hammer is coming to town. Yeah.
Jim, add, add the TV commercials.
I didn't figure out where that intersection was, I wasn't sure.
It's south of Anawak, about three miles and about.
Yeah.
It's twenty-nine thirty-six.
Twenty-nine thirty-six, is it? Yeah, I saw the original email.
Ross Sterling.
So they're holding us harmless.
The sheriff's gonna have to, uh.
Sheriff, are you familiar with the film and they want to do?
No, sir, I'm not, tell me.
Tell me again, I was not paying attention.
Alright, so it's, uh, filming permit application by Kenneth Bennett's LLC from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. They signed it twenty-nine thirty-six and F and five.
Yes, I am aware of that.
Okay.
And they have, uh, agreed to pay for secondary employment on a sheriff's deputy to help secure the highway, divert traffic. We see no problem with it, and it's not, it's a very low traffic area.
Okay.
In that case, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Hammond. You have the questions, comments, if not, those in favor? Opposed, most carries, thanks, Sheriff. Five point seven, discussing certain document management services for ARPA-funded document preservation for Thames County clerk, district clerk's office. Got a letter in your packet? Um, Michael, the public management and Robbie have worked with county and district clerk's offices over, over past several weeks to develop the materials and schedule necessary for their, their requested documentation, presentation services. Ready to move forward with that.
Make motion, Judge.
First by Commissioner Hammond. Second by Commissioner Tass, questions? Those in favor? Opposed, most carries, five eight, BJ, you're up, discussing, consider Borson Madison Pipe US A, two thousand thirteen reinvestment zone renewed. Good morning.
Morning, Judge, measures.
Morning, Major.
Good morning, pressure. I'd get for you is a request to, uh, renew the existing Borson Manestment Pipe US twenty thirteen reinvestment zone. Uh, reinvestment zone was established when Borson entered into a tax payment to reject the anyone agreement with county back in two thousand thirteen. By statute, uh, those, the term of those reinvestment zones are only five years. However, you know, the expiration does not affect any, uh, agreements that are in place. However, they're contemplating, uh, expansion of their facility, and, uh, they've requested that, uh, a public hearing be conducted to, uh, reestablish, uh, re-designate the investment zone. And the, uh, public hearing is requested to be conducted on March eighth of twenty twenty-six.
So, your request is set for a public hearing. So your question said for public hearing, I'll guess, said that again, more take?
More take.
That's in. Listen back, Mr. Combs, second back, Mr. Tice, questions? Those favorite?
All right.
Close most carries five-nine, discuss consider Oleon Americas Inc. tax abatement application instead of BJ.
Uh, thank you, Judge, Commissioners, uh, if you recall, uh, this application was presented to, by Oleon Americas Incorporated, uh, in January. At that time, the court accepted the application, uh, since that time, they have, uh, included a correction to the capital investment, uh, for the project. They've been impacted by cost increases, this is most projects have been, and that, uh, capital investment, uh, increase has been reflected in the application you have before you. Just for background, you know, as mentioned before, the court, uh, accepted the application back in January and was presented today as a request to, uh, approve the application, uh, based upon recommendations and background. So it's included in today's package, it's an overview, uh, based upon, uh, the experience that we've had with Oleon. This project's been in due diligence, uh, since twenty seventeen, uh, the noted is twenty eighteen of the recommendations, but they've been looking to cite this project in various locales over time. Uh, Dayton, Jefferson County, uh, Chambers County, various sites in Chambers County and the like. And so it was a competitive project at that time, and we've been working with them since that time. Uh, just to really to reiterate the elements of the project, the, the project is going to be built on twelve point five-four acres in the Bay Ten Business Park in an area that's designated as heavy industrial, by the city of Bay Town's, uh, Unified Land Development Code. Job creations anticipated to be, uh, up to thirty, uh, petrochemical industry jobs, uh, thirty-four point million dollars in investment. And the construction is anticipated to start in the second quarter of this year. Um, what's noted, uh, is the economic impact of projects such as these are very similar to other petrochemical projects, uh, in the area. So we go back to page two of the recommendations, um, the rationale for consideration today is that, given the technology, the industry sector, job creation, capital investment, more importantly, the integrated potential for this, this, this project, uh, you know, produces derivatives, uh, that are going to be, uh, very appealing to other projects that are going to be citing in the area with respect to biofuels and the like. And so that has a lot of integrated potential, um, for, for the court, uh, in for the county. So the recommendations that are presented today are to approve the Oleon application and consider two models, uh, five-year tax abatement and a seven-year tax abatement. So the two models that are provided to you reflect, um, essentially, uh, negotiations or, uh, reviews that have been conducted since the project's been in due diligence in twenty eighteen time period. At that time, policy from the county allowed for a five-year tax abatement based upon the percentages that are noted in the first model, hundred percent first two years, seventy-five, sixteen, fifty. Uh, the second model is an alternative, looking at, uh, the seven-year tax abatement, uh, that, uh, allowed for a hundred percent for the first year, but yet have, uh, revenue to, to be derived from the project from years, uh, two through seven to the county, uh, with a net impact of sixty forty, which is consistent with other abatements that the county was, uh, entering into at the time, uh, that the project was, uh, being competed for. So those are, uh, presented for your consideration, be glad to answer any questions.
All right, so questions, um, and, and you and I talked yesterday. So exactly what they're doing, I know there's, uh, you told me there, there's a lot of, um, products that they're mixing or whatever they're doing with them. That are natural biodiesols, things that can expand on that.
Sure, I was gonna read verbatim, Judge, from any cover letter that you provided, uh, their specialty lies in converting natural fats. These are organic fats and oils, especially, uh, oleochemicals and biodiesel. They use fatty acids, glycerin, esters, polyesters, dimers and technical oils, uh, with, can be converted, uh, from a full family of chemicals called oleochemicals into biodiesels that are natural as well. So these are, um, you know, very similar to paraffins and waxes, uh, that are, uh, treated and distilled and modified in some of the larger refiners in this area. Uh, what was sent to you, Judge, and I, I sent, uh, presentations to the commissioners as well, was an overview of the project, uh, and then the profile of the plant that cited. Yeah, there's some three D and design features that got some tanks in a tank farm and, uh, there's a tower there, but, uh, nothing that's dissimilar to other, uh, you know, industries and facilities that are in around the, the area. And again, this is, uh, it located in Bay Ten, um, in an area that's designated as heavy industrial. Uh, just as a matter of note, coincident with working with this project, were several projects that were looking at the Bay Ten site, uh, in that heavy industrial, uh, area, uh, pre designation of the USMCA, if you recall, the Trump administration pulled back from NAFTA and then re-NAFTA, if you will, on the USMCA. So this is one of the first projects that re-engaging, uh, to cite in that, uh, that area that's been designated as heavy industrial.
How long has this been designated heavy industrial? About?
Gosh, uh, Parkside Capital, the Moody family bought that asset, you know, some years ago, and, uh, when the, uh, city of Baytown adopted its ULDC, uh, with respect to that area and their ETJ, those are the designations that, uh, were set for.
It was around two thousand eight?
Yep. And, and we've been marketing it as such, uh, since, uh, Moody's had it, uh, the act of group, which have been very active about inviting the drivers along. But that, that area, uh, they've been doing quite a bit of development.
Yeah, I saw it through there yesterday, it's a lot of. A lot of them. All right, so, you know, I guess the question is, you know, how's it gonna affect the? It's, there's a native industrial. How's it gonna affect the neighbors, um, and is it going to affect the neighbors? Another prevailing wind, uh, will not go toward, will not blow anything toward the, uh, the homes there, that are currently there. Um, eh, you know, in the west side of county, we're, we're industry. And we're residential, and we've got to figure out how to, to blend those to make it work for everybody, which I know you know, I'm preaching to the choir. So I guess the question is, how does this work with residents, Larry?
Yes, the, uh, conferences that, uh, they had and had some discussion working with Cory back in mid-two thousand twenty to, to ask that with respect to commercial development. And, you know, Cory simply, you know, tracked that the green space requirements that are cited in policy that, uh, all types of business development, including industrial, commercial retail, shall include visual screens, sound buffers and all those elements that, uh, can ensconce an operation like that so as to not be disrupted to the community. At that time, they had a concern of one single, I think it was a residential area, just to the east of their, their, uh, their eastern boundary. And so they had some concerns at that time, and they ran through, um, you know, the development, they engaged an engineering firm to work with city of Baytown and also work with Chambers County at that time. They also were pursuing, uh, a septic, uh, tank, uh, septic, uh, allowance in the event that the wastewater treatment facility that the, uh, Bay Ten owners are, uh, going to be developing. So we're working with Chambers County at that point as well. So there's been some discussions and they've been very, you know, vigilant in their due diligence, they're sure that they're their neighbor. Um, and then the other concern at that time was a high fear on the one tower that they have, and, uh, they engage with city of Baytown, and that falls within the parameters of, uh, of the zoning designations on the heavy industrial as well. So I think, uh, these, uh, folks are, you know, another Belgian firm, you know, they want to be good neighbors, um, and, uh, you know, they will, uh, at least adopt their site plans to, to ensure that they're not disrupted in, in, in the community because, uh, you know, development in that area is being envisaged, uh, because of the transportation reinvestment zone that the county's looking at and potential investment in that area as well. Um, but again, uh, it, what was appealing for the site was that it was designated as heavy industrial, and they've tried to fit their development plans within that guideline.
So that is in the, in the reinvestment zone?
Yes. Yeah, now the, the most recent one that was expanded.
So those funds that come in from that, once we get a reinvestment zone done.
They're.
We'll go for infrastructure projects in that.
In that area, in and around that area, yes.
So it, yeah, I mean, that's one of the things I think we talked about yesterday is, how do you make it so these projects are affecting, you know, whether it's, um, Big City, whether it's Co., for, how do you make it where you can capture that, you can earmark, and there, you need to listen to this, so you can help me in there. How do you earmark those funds to help with the people that it, those projects are affecting?
Yeah, and that's.
Drainage or the roads or the infrastructure, yeah, you, you know, go ahead.
Yes, and, and that's gonna take, uh, some alignment with the development review committee, you know, what's the framework and the boundaries of the TRZ are established and that, you know, it's gonna be a sort of a crawl, walk, run approach, once the boundaries are, uh, established and the, uh, development plans, you're gonna go in, and that's the motivating factor to be in, inside this reinvestment zone, right, the transportation reinvestment zone. So as their development plans align with the counties, when they get together to participate in that regard, that opens up the opportunity, not to go too far ahead, that opens up, up the opportunity to, uh, cobble together or integrate other structures within the TRZ, management district and otherwise, right? So, I mean, that area is big, um, or sufficiently large enough to have those considerations, but it's gonna take some sort of coordination with engineering, planning, the taxpayers or developers and the DRC to make those alignments, it's target the projects, uh, and, and to optimize, uh, you know, the, whatever elements you've got to be designed and implemented by the county and taxpayers as part of the development plan.
Yeah, and well, and, and with the way they're growing, we, we need infrastructure.
Yes.
We need drainage, as AC talked about while ago, and, uh, but we also need, need roads, and we've got the plans that, that this is a way to fund those to help the people that these projects are actually affecting. And, you know, so. This is off subject a little bit, and I'll just mention it to you so we can think about it, do we go in and, uh, do a TRZ over there, TGS and CCID one, Big City, and do the same thing, is that a way to manage those funds, keep them close to, um, close to the people that, that these budgets are affecting? Just an idea, you don't have to ask, sure, but let's think about it and talk about it. All right, so this is in, it's in your precinct? Oh, and, but, but the homes it's affected is in Tommy.
No, no, all, all the homes are going to be, Legends Bay would be to the northeast of, of this area. The homes that primarily would be affected are future homes development, the, all the old Winfrey property that has been purchased and they've got plans to develop a couple hundred acres.
Right.
Just to do east of this property is, uh, is the future home that will be affected for the most part, prevailing winds. You also got the, uh, big, what is that called, the, uh, what's that development going on at ninety-nine in Bay, uh? No, at ninety-nine and I ten.
Oh, the, the subdivision, Tom, man?
Yeah.
On the west side?
It, yeah, it would be to the northwest of this property, which prevailing winds coming from the southeast would take a ride over that, the, uh, heights of Bay Town.
Yeah. So very touch.
Yeah, the, I mean, currently, the homes immediately around it are pretty scarce, but if you look at what's planned, there's a lot of residential plan there.
Are you talking about this area?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, that's it.
Yeah. So, and with some of these products, Brian, older concerned, so. For sure.
Yeah, Legends Bay.
Yeah. Yeah, they're out.
We talked about that yesterday, he took in, it's all stuff back to, you know, Legends Bay and apartments.
I wonder if the people live there. They're not down winds.
Well, tell them when they call you.
I do.
The prevailing winds would take this back toward heights of Bay Town.
Right.
But then, you know, you've, you've got one coming in due east of it also as neighbors.
Take off. So again, I mean, I guess the question is, how do you say, okay? Residential folks, this is good for you, and here's why.
One thing I will make a comment on, I think it's worth noting, you know, we're negotiating an agreement with TGS, and I really would like to get one with AmeriPort. We don't have one Bay Ten, that really takes our, uh, separation ordinance to the next level, you know, goes above and beyond it. And, I mean, personally, I don't know enough about this project, you know, to say, but I, I would like, if we're gonna do something to this effect in that area, and we know residential's coming, I think we need some kind of above and beyond agreement with, uh, Bay Ten.
Absolutely.
So that says what, I mean, what, to, not specifically, but what's the gist of it?
What's the gist of it? You know, uh, currently, our requirements are, what, fifty feet is all we have with a sight and sound buffer. Uh, and we're even vague on that, we're hoping to tighten it up a little bit, but, you know, we're negotiating with TGS to get a minimum of three times that amount, you know, so.
That's. I agree.
So I tried to do some research online about this company and, yes. Very, very, very limited information.
Kind of new company, is it, BJ?
No, it's, it's been around for a while, but it's, it's actually a Belgium-owned company, so, uh, just had trouble finding any information.
Yeah.
History on them. I don't know, I just kind of a little bit wary about putting it over there away from the true petrochemical section that we have. So. I think we all are, Commissioner.
So, I mean, they can go in there. Have they got a TCQ permit?
Yeah, they're working that right now.
They're working, okay.
Do they work under the state permit of fifteen?
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, permitted by rule.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they can put this project in, now the question is, do we give them a tax payment? Yeah, and if we don't, do they go somewhere else, do they, they go back to Dayton or, um, where else, say they were looking?
Not Jefferson County.
Jefferson County.
Yeah, their, their whole selection and negotiation with the Bay Ten group has been predicated on the, uh, the, uh, work that we've been doing on half of the county with them to cite them, going back to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Is there any kind of three thirteen with Barbers Hill or anything?
No, but it is in the Barbers Hill school.
Yeah, I saw that in the paperwork.
Can school district do three thirteens?
Yeah, they can until, uh, December thirty-one.
Yep. So BJ, it's, I'd like to know a little more, company might meet with them, I mean, is, is it imperative that we get this done today?
Well, they have a construction schedule that they were meeting through, and I, they invited the principal that, uh, has been working on a project to attend, he had conflict, uh, however, uh, again, the movement, the recommendations have been set forth, you know, for the, the court to consideration, the action is to simply not take any action and that, you know, for, it's the next step, it's the fact that the, the application was going to be approved, that they would come back next quarter to request the establishment of reinvestment zone. So coincident with that, it would be a two for, if they, if you wanted to visit with them, uh, prior to court to answer the questions that emerged from this with respect to, uh, you know, sound, sight, smells, wherever the case might be that may be, uh, related to their project, I think they'd be willing to do that, they were excited about the possibility of going forward with this project, given the long lead time they've been working on the project. And it is their, uh, initial project in, in the, in this country, the first project, it's kind of. So it's a court discretion.
I'd definitely like to meet with them, your honor.
I, I think another decision we need to make as a court is what Tommy brought up a while ago, you know, we really want to get into petrochemical stuff away from the existing areas that we want to scatter throughout the county or not. I don't.
Yeah, that's a good one. So what are you asking for today, BJ?
Two things, to approve the application as it's presented today, and then, uh, decide on what, uh, potential incentive, uh, model would be acceptable to the court. The one that was in effect, uh, when the project was initially presented to the county, we were working with them, and the alternative, the seventh year, which provide some relief in the first year at maximum value for them, but also balance that with revenue to the county. And for the school district as well, with respect to the school utilization tax.
All right, so what's court's pleasure, on the tablet, come back, you wanna?
I'd like to table it, come back, your honor, have a meeting with them.
Yeah, there may be some other discussions with city of Baytown as well, because that HI designation is a city of Baytown ordinance.
And they have the authority in, in their ETJ.
And it's limited purpose annexation.
Oh, it is? So it's not an E.
Oh, oh, yeah, the CCIDs are.
Okay, so we'll table it, and BJ will set that meeting up.
Sure.
With myself and Commissioner Tice, I mean, unless you want to have them back here for. I mean, unless you want to have them back here for a commissioners' court meeting. Well, maybe we need to meet Thursday, and the rest of the courts, you know, maybe.
It's a recommendation, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay.
I'd be happy with y'all's recommendation, if y'all make with them.
All right, thanks, sir. And I maybe, maybe you two guys need.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make sure this too, available off the court.
And the Acton Group is going to be key to this as well. I mean, that HI, I mean, they're lead associates of realtors or brokers that are marketing that, and we just presented that for another project because of the wastewater treatment facility they're going to be bringing. You know, so that's something needs to be resolved, so the uses that fall within the HI designation per the ULDC at City of Baytown, you know, are broad. And as I mentioned before, Corey provides guidance with respect to setbacks and so forth for the county. But if nothing changes as it stands right now, there are going to be other projects that fit within the parameters of that HI designation that will find that site appealing, for the very reasons that they do, it's somewhat removed up to the Grand Parkway and Wisconsin area. But you're making all the principals aware, Acton Group, City of Baytown, about the presidential development is the missing piece that hadn't been the case up till now.
Yes, I understand, and we need to have Corey join us in that meeting also.
Can you help me a little bit with that HI designation? I didn't quite understand.
Heavy industrial, yeah, there's a whole category of designations that fall under HI, and I don't have a copy of it right now, but I'll send you the code. Of uses, some are very specific, some somewhat vague, but this falls within that HI.
It basically allows just about any kind of industrial.
Take your hand from this place.
All right, so five point nine will be tabled by ten, discuss the P H C P L one Propco LLC, tax payment agreement assigned, assignment to Indian O P P I, four owner LLC. BJ.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. P H C P L one Propco LLC has an agreement with the county tax payment agreement that was amended in August of twenty twenty-one to perpetuate the lease with Webster, if you recall, Vera had that. Vera, which is the owner entity of the P H C P L one Propco LLC, has now sold that building to Apollo, R two, the triple N op for owner to LLC. And they are, they are now requesting assignment of the agreement, of their agreement that they have with the county, you know, per policy that is allowed under section nine of the agreement. And so as they've noted in the covered letter to Judge Celia, the Webster store will remain the tenant in accordance with the agreement as negotiated back in August. So the request to assign is presented to the court for consideration today.
We need to start charging administrative fees for this.
Well, it is, it all falls under that whole. There's a lot of, yes, a lot of work.
I know, that's why we keep charging. Move for approval.
Let's back to Commissioner Collins, second back to Commissioner Hammond, any questions in favor? Pose, most carries. Do we know five eight? Let it check it, do it again.
Yeah, we did, Collins and Todd.
All right, those in favor on five eight? Pose, most carries, just to make sure we got, the five nine is tabled, thank you, BJ.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, BJ.
Hi, main building seven one, discuss consider approving Brookstone LP change order now at seventy-two thousand, seventy-one dollars ninety cents with road bridge line stabilization and drivable gravel area with that complex. Mike.
Yes, this is basically, we're going to do all the line stabilization for Roden Bridge and the box site, and Roden Bridge approved the money, and it was going to come out of their budget. I got with Aaron, and Aaron said, go ahead and make it a change order, and he will bring the money in from, I guess, basically, the.
Comes from the bond.
For the bond right now.
Certificate obligation.
Yeah.
So Roden Bridge is paying for it, how is it getting paid more by the CO? I don't get that.
Well, Roat, he just hasn't made the, I'll let him talk to you about it.
Yeah, so Rice is showing it, because Corey was going to pay for the Roden Bridge fines. So just to make it simple, we split and charged it into the CO, and if we do concur, then we don't have to do any transfers or anything, or if we do need some extra money, we know that we can move it from there for that purpose.
So what was in the CO for Roden Bridge that we're pulling it from? I don't.
Well, because Roden Bridge was going to do their own parking lot, right?
And, oh, okay, so we had money in there for Roden Bridge to do this project or park something on.
Yes, sir, and so they're not going to do it, Roden Bridge is going to do it themselves anymore, so now we're going to move it to the CO project and let Brookstone handle it.
And this is for the line, they're still going to do part of it, but this is the line stabilization, okay? They're still got part of it that they're going to do themselves.
Yeah, they're moving the material from the old box site.
Yeah, I get it, I just was curious.
entertain most. Push my commissioner ties, second back for Sam. Yeah, the questions, so the favor. Pose, most carries for the record, Commissioner Gore is not present today, sorry, admits that. And six one, he requested to table it, so it is tabled. Seven two, discuss consider approving video surveillance and surveillance, surveillance and access control from data box at the West Side Complex in the amount of fifty thousand five forty-eight seven, Mike.
This is just going in with IT to get Data Vox to come in on our, our video surveillance and our, our access to bring their system in and make everything work together.
Will this be the card entry?
Yes, the card entries and the cameras.
Little bit off subject, but can we get some kind of a price or look at something? For getting some kind of a video at our box sites? Don't have to be real fancy, but something where we can see, read if they have their tags and license numbers, see who's coming in illegally, where we can monitor and cut down on users.
I can look into it, absolutely.
Good, yeah, you know, those things.
Well, you're talking about all the box sites.
You know, the little, they might even work.
Yeah, you're talking about all the box sites.
I'm talking about all the box sites, because, you know, that's a good way to police them, we could read, and you could go back, look who's abusing these things and cut them off.
So we need to hurry up with the one we're building right now, but.
Yeah, you may want to talk to them about that.
Yeah, you know, I might be able to monitor, you know, read their sticker, make sure it's up there.
Okay.
So, and license plate.
And well, you have license plates to identify who's these, yeah.
We'll get on.
All right, that was good. I heard time my voice, push back for Shannon. Second back for Mr. Collins, any other questions?
Just to make sure that there was no work on here to note that fifty thousand dollars, that was a co-op purchase, that is on one of our calls.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, those in favor? Pose, most carries. Thank you, Marcus Management, we'll come back, we're going to do a presentation.
What'd you say about six point one?
Table. For Gore. Ten point one, discuss consider amendment, he requests a tablet this morning since he couldn't be here. Ten one, discuss consider amendments to Chambers County Fire Code. Morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, I appreciate the support. I have a lot of people to thank, so I don't want to leave anybody out. This is just further refines the language in Exhibit B as it pertains to apartments or nursing facilities, institutional facilities that are built of combustible construction. We previously had language in there, but it just, it was a little too vague. We needed to make it simple and cut to the chase of what we were trying to do, so that's what this language accomplishes here.
I want to say I like it. Like this, yeah, looks good.
Move for approval.
Exactly.
Let's back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Tass, any questions? All right, pose, most carries to ten point two, discuss consider mask getting permanent application for March fifth, V L O, March fourth, twenty twenty-two, right?
Okay, so all of the appropriate parties, Sheriff's Office, EMS, Environmental Health, and myself have reviewed this, and they submitted the appropriate documentation we requested in accordance with law, including a site plan showing emergency exits and such. So we are okay with the court approving, it's just a formality in the law where it's supposed to be considered, and anyone can speak for or against the permit before it's issued.
Question approval. Sorry, push back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Hammond. No questions, so the favor. Pose, Mr. Carries.
Thank you, will issue the permit.
Now, we're going back to Roden Bridge. I know we got presentation, let's take ten minutes and we'll make sure the presentation is set up and then go before. Ten minute break, ten thirty-one.
Thank you.
I saw your elbow.
That need to be implemented. And so the recommendations from this study will actually feed into that. Um, and and be queued up for funding from from the another state source as well. So I'm going to let um Matt present the modeling side of this and kind of where freezing Nichols is with this study.
Okay, before you start, you heard um gentleman A C talk about th- those issues. I'm gonna get Lauren to make y'all copy his questions and um and and his phone number also.
Yes.
And you'll have that Cory will have it.
Yes, and that brings up a good point I was gonna ask at the end of this. So we've when we met with the Texas Water Development Board here, I don't know, earlier in the month. We talked about maybe utilizing this as a public comment platform uh to where we could post this presentation. Uh, to the county websites and then uh, you know, offer or try to gain back uh, public comments as a whole.
Yes.
And so that is, I I believe what we're gonna do, right?
That's the plan. Um Samantha has asked for us to have kind of a voiceover of the presentation that can be posted on social media. And we've also created a G I S map that um anyone where how however Samantha chooses to post that. Can go into the G I S map and actually drop a pin, make a comment about what the drainage problem is that they're seeing. And then freezing Nichols will periodically go in and basically sort of glean data from that. So it really gives us some very localized on the ground eyewitness um stories of of the kind of flooding people are seeing. It's super important for us because it helps us make our existing conditions model if you'll um. Of what's going on kind of right now, our baseline conditions model. It helps make that model more accurate because it gives us very localized granular on the ground data about what people are seeing. So it's it's super important to the accuracy of the study before we move into proposed projects.
Right, and just as as a follow up, I mean, that I I just think they're doing an outstanding job. And we when we talked through the process with the Water Development Board, uh, they they were very excited about, you know, this being a comprehensive project that's going up into Liberty. And even talking about how we envision some of the possibilities, projects uh, you know, moving forward on both west side and east side projects. They Water Development Board seemed like they were really, you know, great projects already. Uh, look forward to the end process where, you know, we could potentially gain that grant money for for building some of these things. And reducing uh flood risk for Chambers County, so.
And and Liberty County.
It well, true.
Cause it goes right up.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, as they said, my name's Matt Lewis. I'm the Assistant Project Manager and Technical Lead for this project. So I wanted to kind of walk through our current status and where we are and touch in a little bit more detail on some of the things Dane talked about. So as as Dane mentioned, the uh main project overview is to identify existing flood hazards across our entire study area. Uh, which is Dane mentioned is a good chunk of Chambers County and as well as Liberty County. Study areas in total about nine hundred and ninety square miles, which is a very large study area. We cover roughly four hundred and forty square miles of Chambers County, uh primarily all of the uh populated areas. We don't go into the uh, in our National Wildlife Refuge area. Little benefit to studying that area for flood reduction projects and cut that area out to save uh some of the modeling time and effort. Uh, and then.
Does he go over to Harris County?
There is a small section today that's Harris County, um about five to eight percent of the study areas within Harris County because of Cedar Bayou. Cedar Bayou watershed is the dividing line between Liberty, Chambers and Harris Counties. And so to account for all the flow coming into Cedar from the Harris side, we.
That's good.
Yeah.
So is that line to the west to Cedar Bayou? Is that pretty much the watershed?
That is the stream center line. Uh, the red line is basically the watershed line, yes.
Okay. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Yeah, and that's uh, the thing about Cedar Bayou is it's been studied in detail by Harris County several times. So we have, we have a lot of good information on that side already, so we're we're focusing on the Chambers side uh and the Liberty side of the two by. Uh, so I wanted to walk through some of the 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 main five project milestones. Uh, this project is going to to go over, I'm just very briefly to go over the timeline. It's a it's a very large study area and has a lot of objectives and so our is also somewhat long project. The the end goal is to have this wrapped up by September twenty twenty four, file report, file everything. Uh, there's some interim deliverables that we'll provide, uh, so I'm gonna step through each of these five objects here's.
As we go.
Uh, like Dane mentioned, uh, we we kicked off the project in March twenty twenty one. Uh, we've been so we've been working for almost a year now. Um, so we started off just establishing where we actually do want to do the study, the level of detail for certain study areas. Obviously, there's there's areas in both counties that benefit more from additional zooming in on flooding problems. There's other areas you can zoom out a little bit and save some effort. While still getting a good result in the area issue. That was where we started and that that took place last year. We've completed that. We've we've moved on from that. So um, one of the key things uh that the Water Development Board requires is studying, what they call hole hug tens, which is a USGS designation watersheds. So on this map, you can see in the purple lines, we have what they call hug tens for large watersheds. So we've got the Cedar Bayou one, the Trinity Old River watershed, White Turtle Bayou, uh, the whole bayou, Spinal Top. Those are the main full hug tens we're studying, so that's that's why we've extended it up into Liberty County. Um, you can even imagine, as you can see how those watersheds all travel through. Uh, there's things that we can do in Liberty County that will also benefit Chambers County, just as as the water doesn't care about the county line. It will move where it wants to move, so our goal is holistically study the study area and improve things for everyone.
We already in the Spinal Top, isn't there already a comprehensive study on Spinal Top?
There is a study on Spinal Top. I'm not particularly, my mind is saying there's a study on the primary bayou only uh for me from Long Corry.
He held you, he did that.
Yeah, I believe that primarily studied improvements to the mains down those Spinal Top. I don't think he covered comprehensive study of the the watershed. And and uh, I'll get to that in a second. We talked about data collection. All the work that's been done in the county so far is something we're we're collecting, we're using all that data. So we don't want to repeat any studies that have already been done. Uh, so just briefly, I'll go through um some of the subdivisions that we have in the project. Uh, as Cory mentioned, we have several partners partnering uh with the county on this study. Uh, so Mont Belvieu is the largest partner. And also have the City of Dayton, the City of Liberty, W C I D five, also up in Liberty County. Um, so you see here is the study area broken into three areas. You have study area A in red, B in blue, and C in green. Uh, this is what we've kind of worked out with cost sharing with the City of Mont Belvieu and the other study partners to contribute to various parts of the the local chair. Red study area, that's what Freezing Nichols is doing. That's what that's the area we're studying. B in blue is the study area that the consultant for City Mont Belvieu is responsible for. So that includes the other part of Cedar Bayou and basically things that go through City of Mont Belvieu. And then study area C in green is once you get, it's basically cotton and hackberry values as you get south of I ten. Uh, you get out of Mont Belvieu, but that war originates from there. So that area will be cooperating very closely uh with that consultant to make sure everything they do, we were aware of it. And they'll they'll be working on existing condition, we'll be working on proposed as that areas. Why is it then?
Who's their consultant?
Our consultant is constantly. We've we've had several coordination meetings with them, let's talk, or we actually have one later today talking about. So we're the uh, the final outcome of this study is one combined proposal. This is just a little bit how the work is split up. But overall, the the county is the one in agreement with the Water Development Board and uh, there'll be one final proposal when we get to the end. That's kind of project kickoff and everything, so we'll jump ahead to some of our data collection items. Obviously, it's a large study area and a lot of things have been happening uh over the past several years especially. Large flood events and a lot of money pouring into studies. Um, so we wanted to make sure we gather as much of that information as possible, so we don't redo anything. Just walked through a few of our data collection activities thus far. Um, so we want to gather everything we can from previous flood events, uh, high water marks, inundation boundaries. Stage boundaries from or stage hydrograms, high water marks, anything we can get that says how how the water was and when it was there. Uh, we can use to help calibrate our existing condition models and that makes them more accurate. So when we go and we plug in a proposed improvement to a channel or a detention basin, we get a better idea of how that will actually perform when it gets designed. Um, so like I said, we've also been coordinating with county and other consultants about gathering previous drainage studies. Start gathering record plans from text dive uh counties from the cities. So we can plug in bridges, coves, things that affect how water moves through these streams. Everyone has a bridge they don't like. We want to make sure we mull those, make sure we capture those actions. And of course, there are several ongoing projects, in particular, one uh Kill Gore drainage project is a big one that we want to include. So we're we're working with Cory to make sure we incorporate those updates and how that drainage will work into our study. And then finally, um, whatever we can't get from other studies or plans or survey or basically other people. Uh, we'll be doing some survey on important crossings, picking up cross sections of some of the more significant values to make sure we can properly model those crossings. And then for smaller items, you know, a forty eight inch cove, we may not need to actually survey. We can just go look at it and measure it and get an idea of how big it actually is and what its condition is. Like Dane mentioned, we we have a a public web map available that has a link and uh. I don't know, this may not be the right thing for the actual public demo I was originally planning, but what we're planning to do is. Record a short instructional video that can be that can be shared with anybody's, they can go in and it's it's very straightforward. And you basically click add and click the point you want to add. There's a short list of questions to answer that are basically, how often does it flood? Um, what do you think is the cause? And there's a comment box to add additional comments. So we'll be recording that and sharing that link so it can be it can be shared with the public at large. And so yeah, ignore that live demonstration in this presentation, it may not uh be the proper time. I'm not gonna go over my long time, so I will provide that video that can share. Uh, next topic, uh, existing condition modeling. So this is, this is more just a status update on what we've done so far. The existing condition has three major components. We've got establishing the existing condition hydrology, which is saying where just when it rains, how much water is there, where does it go? Um, and then hydraulics, which is the actual modeling of the streams, is like how high does the water get? Um, you know, does it flow from this stream to over to this stream, that sort of thing? And then finally, the the one of our main deliverables of the existing condition is existing condition inundation maps. Uh, so you can see where we see flooding in various types of lakes. Uh, so I just wanted to step through so you can see some of the work we've we've completed. So existing conditions is is in progress right now. We've completed the hydrology component and finished that in December. And we're now into the hydraulics component, uh, which will be completed in April, uh, end of April, early May. This year, um, so twenty twenty four, all this sounds very far away, but that's that allows us time to finish the existing conditions this year. And then get into a year's worth of mulling of proposed projects. Uh, so there's an interim deliverable in the existing condition that we'll be providing probably around the end of this year. That'll include those existing condition maps and models that could be used. So there's a few things I wanted to just kind of touch on as you can see what what we've done. For the hydrology portion, um, we've taken a methodology we've used recently in Harris County to. Better optimize uh the amount of flow you get out of certain areas. And it's based on the area itself, so that's why I'm calling sub-basins, you sell these little small areas. We've delineated each of those areas to outfall to a particular point. So in theory, minus some larger events, every piece of area will go to a outfall of one of those sub-basins. Cause that gives us an area of how much, when it rains, this area contributes to a certain point. Uh, so we split it up, the county into one, one to five square mile basins, depending on the level of detail we were searching for. So obviously, when there's more more risk, we've focused on a higher level of detail. So you see smaller sub-basins in in a more populated areas, west side of the county, in Dayton and Liberty and near near parts of double buyer. Uh, the next component that goes into our hydrology is looking at conveyance, how does water actually, what path does it have to get out of those sub areas? So the next component that is looking at, one, the actual pass, and then what is the ability of that path? So we we look at it, is it is it a concrete line drainage channel? Is it a natural drainage way? Is it, was it dug out ten years ago and hasn't been maintained? And so it's got trees growing in it now. All those things affect how quickly that water will move through that system. So that's another thing we look at to determine how how quickly that water, the hydrograph will peak. And then part of the most familiar components, kind of hard to see on the screen. Um, it's also in the packet, it's probably a little easier to see. Breaking out the the whole study area into various land uses. And these are, these are not land uses in the in the planning sense, these are land uses related to drainage. So when we say a land use for drainage, we're looking at how does that land drain most commonly? So for the majority of the area, it is going to be considered undeveloped, means it it has small minor ditches or small soils that direct water. But there's no major storms, sewer sewer infrastructure or major roadside ditches. Those are different categories that we do break down. So if curb and gutter storms are broken out for some of the cities, we have open space grading, which primarily focuses on golf courses, parks, things that are. That are clear, so they are basically grass, but they are also purposely grazed to drain a certain way rather than just land that is in its natural state. Uh, this, when you have undeveloped land that's draining, you have a lot more ponding, a lot more surface storage than you have. And you actually start going and grave lands that create a certain way. And the last thing that goes into our hydrology component is the soil itself. You can see on this map, there's a lot of pink, that is our soil type D, which is basically clay soil. Probably not surprising to anyone that a lot of clay soils uh throughout the entire study area, but especially in most of Chambers County. Uh, there's there's scattered pieces of more sandy, loamy soil through the Trinity River Basin. But for the most part, it's it's heavily focused on clay soils. So that's another thing that goes into when it rains, how much runoff is there? More clay or soil, the less infiltration you have, the more runoff you get. So we take all that information, we've completed this task. And we moved on to to putting that into a hydro hydrologic model. And it takes the area, it takes all those other parameters we talked about, and it puts them into an equation that gives us the ability to. Plug in a rainfall and get runoff out of it. So you can see on the right that graphic, it shows this is a synthetic storm we've applied, is a typical design storm. Has a certain distribution of the rainfall and it generates a certain runoff hydrograph. So that's the amount of flow, um, this one, that particular sub-basin is about three square miles and produces about eleven hundred C F S at its peak. So the shape of that hydrograph is important because it also turns, how quickly does that runoff peak? How fast does it move through the channels? Uh, so you start summing all these areas together, that's when you really start seeing where your flood risks are. So that's that's part of the project we have completed up to this point. Minus tweaks that we'll make for calibration when we get into further uh refinement. Uh, cause right now I have a synthetic storm plugged in in there, but we'll also be calibrating to, for sure. Uh, Hurricane Harvey and probable storm of Melda. So we have rainfall that we can pull, uh, radar rainfall from the National Weather Service that we can plug in. We can get fairly accurate, about four kilometers by four kilometer cells, but it's it's better than just, you know, one or two gauges scattered throughout the county. We can get a pretty high resolution rainfall across the mall and plug that in. And then we'll calibrate to known flooding sources. The Brad Flop Image Trust provided us with good calibration data for those two storms. So we can, we can see, okay, this house flooded, it was estimated to about this level. We can look at our malls and how close are we? And we can tweak our existing conditions to get as close as we can uh to matching all those events. Uh, and then this is just a little bit of a preview. Um, this is a very preliminary inundation map of Westport, double buyer. And you can see this is, oh, there's a lot of water everywhere. I'm sure you're well aware, Chambers is a very flat county, water tends to spread when it gets high. Uh, this is an example of what we'd be providing when we get into the final existing condition phases. This is a preliminary hundred year inundation map for the Westport double buyer. Uh, so that's that's what we're working on now, we're going through calibrating, adding structures, um, refining how the streams look. Adding in the imagery so we can get the full depth of channels, things like that. That's um. That is where we are today, and then looking forward into the future. Uh, the flood mitigation plans will kick off this summer and will continue all the way to the end of the project, twenty twenty four. This is where I'll be looking at, we'll be collaborating with all of our study partners. That includes obviously Chambers County, everyone in this room, uh, includes State of the Day, Liberty, W C fifty five. Anyone who wants to, we can talk to you. And get ideas for projects that you already have in mind. We can look at modeling and seeing if if those projects will provide enough benefit to justify uh going after state funding for them. So that's one thing, collaborate with study partners to include projects that you already have in mind that we can look at. Identification of focus area, so as we see areas that are flooded, those are the areas you want to zoom in on and do some additional fine detail on proposed conditions and look at. Come up with new ideas, regional detention, channel improvements, um, detention basins, some proactive planning in certain areas. These are all things that we can look at in the proposed condition, so it's a very um back and forth part. We don't want to just say, this is what we think you should do. We want to know what does the county have in mind, what do you think citizens would appreciate having? So that's a very collaborative process that will be had in public meetings and being tossing communications, especially with this Cory in Red Bridge and Samantha. See. Yeah, so to summarize what I said there, um. We'll be developing a list of exceptional projects that can be used to reduce future flood risk, current flood risk. Uh, well, by gathering public information, feedback, doing that proposed condition modeling. So the final deliverable of that section is basically a ranked list of, these are the projects we think are most useful. That you should look at building as soon as possible. Um, some of them may be further out into the future, this may be something uh that you don't need until this area starts to develop. But if we can proactive plan for how to drain that area, we can cut off some of the problems we see uh in certain areas now. And then uh, the the top, I think it's top one or two ranked projects will have some additional modeling to get them further to actual special design phase. Those could be moved into a preliminary engineering engineering report fairly quickly. And that is all I have. I'll send a link to everyone, this is the link, if it's in the packet, if you want to go to this link, you can look at the map. Uh, we'll be posting uh a link in the map as well that takes you to the um, the video that explains on how to use it. Any uh, any questions I could answer to that?
So, excuse me, September twenty twenty four, we'll have something we can take and go after grant funding.
That's correct, the idea of this, the any projects we develop for this can be directly fed into the state flood plans. And that that opens up some additional doors for state funding. That's correct.
As we're going through the existing conditions and looking at it. I'm certain there's some small projects, some low hanging fruit that could make some pretty good improvements in the meantime. How could we identify if we see something like that, just some minor things that the county could take on in the interim? To maybe uh reduce some of the troubled areas?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, I think that's something we can, we can talk about further. So especially as as we identify those trouble areas and it may be caused by somewhat insignificant issues that are easy to fix. Maybe even county staff go through, maybe it's as simple as clearing out a ditch. That's things that as we have constantly, we have monthly status meetings with Cory and Grace and Samantha. Those are things that we can communicate and um that those concerns can be passed on or directly to to us. We can, we can look at that as we go.
I mean, yeah, you take the one this morning that that was mentioned, if you've already looked at it, it's that information. Let's see what we can do, because we have busted monies.
Right.
And under Road Bridge, we're trying.
So, so I speak to that a little bit. We uh, and I was reading through these questions, um, we we did submit one of those, essentially what this question is referencing. Kind of on the west side where we had some inner where the drainage uh kind of the tributary to, I guess, Hackberry kind of drains through from McAdams. Coming on through, uh, making it down to Hackberry, goes through several subdivisions and leads to quite a few issues. And so that was a potential project that we submitted recently uh as, you know, just something to look at for some potential funding. And so Samantha gets things every once in a while that comes down the pike and she'll, she'll talk to me and we we bounce ideas off and and come up with some some different things. So I think that's one of the, you know, this specific, we we could go back and gain some data from Freezing Nichols to be able to. Assist with developing a more detailed project, similar to what we're doing actually on the Kilgore uh project where um. P K is doing the uh existing condition model that y'all proved uh here recently. And Freezing Nichols is gonna um kind of pump out some of that uh solution information. Uh, you know, kind of as a first, first part of the process.
Fast track.
Yeah, fast track, there you go. So um, anyway, that that kind of goes to exactly what you're talking about, so just two examples.
You know, N A C is left, but you know, one issue that we've got for getting grant funding now. Is the strings that are tied to most of the monies that is available would not allow us to do projects in the west side of the area, you know, where A C was referring to.
Right, and so the the funds that Samantha potentially were looking at were not L M I uh tied. And so that's immediately west side uh projects uh come in. So L M I being the low to moderate income, and so.
Yeah, and most of those grants are tied to.
That's right, so if you find one that's not, then you know, that's the type of time. Right, and so anyway, that's what we did. So we're always looking for opportunities and trying to better the the community everywhere.
So is anything that we've already gotten done? We, it's in the Freezing Nichols that can help us with going after tho- those grant funds?
We have not yet, uh, it was a very quick turnaround of about one day of some rough uh numbers. And so we basically took uh the previous projects that we had looked at. In the Chambers County uh Flood Committee, I guess. And uh, we had some rough costs in there, we added twenty percent to those and and then added this one project in this this other area. So that we kind of have a a few that we could shoot at and hopefully uh something falls out that would be positive. So I think there's only sixty million statewide, so I mean. You know, I don't know, it's something we're gonna have to look at, but hopefully we can compete on one of them and and at least get something for the community.
Yeah, no, well, two, uh, some of the money coming through the H G A C. Right now, we're slated, hopefully get about fourteen million of that, but that is L M I related. So it that does have to be used on the east side.
Right, and Samantha has told me that they bumped that up a little bit, I think that's maybe sixteen and a half to seventeen million. Right, so that's that's good, they're they're, the voices that we're making over here with H G A C and others. You know, the, we're starting to, starting to get a little bit of notice, so that's good.
Other questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, good presentation.
Very good, bye, thank you.
Look hard getting it going. Alright. Hi Cory, three point one, discuss consideration of work by C R construction to clean silt out of Gilbert Channel, putting Gilbert cleaning.
Uh, yes, sir, so this goes back, uh. We we've uh recognized that there's some silt that needs to be removed. Basically in phase one of the project, just north of railroad tracks uh leading up to the phase two portion. And uh, we've collected a uh, a a prize from S E R uh to do that work. And actually, I think it's a, it's a really good price. Uh, they've they've done really good work up till now and uh in anticipate them to continuing that. Come back in and do this change order, get this done, so.
Yeah, it might be worth noting that one reason the price is so good for S E R, they've got to go in and do a little bit of work on their own, it's kind of a warranty job. So that's helping keep the cost down.
That is true, you're you're right, yeah.
And sixty nine thousand five hundred of that should be cost shared with uh K T N.
We have a meeting this afternoon in the film and hopefully that's something that comes out of that. But uh, regardless, it would be um. You know, the the full price is essentially what we pay S E R and then uh K T N would be reimbursing us a portion of that back, which is, we're hoping to be about, you know, seventy thousand dollars, so.
Your time, boss?
So.
Combs and Hammond, first by Commissioner Combs, second by Mr. Hammond.
All right, second, I had a question.
Oh, I thought you would. Alright, do I have a second? Second back to Mr. Tice, go ahead.
So the hundred and sixty seven thousand is ultimately what we're on the hook for as of right now.
As of right now, yes, but. As of right now, yes, but certainly it's going to be lower. It's, you know, I, I think K T N mentioned a couple of different prices. They. When we met with them, been about a month ago, something like that. I think they said, you know, certainly fifty thousand dollars, but you know, just, they wanted to split on the, to see what this. Like take the seating out, take some other items that we were already going to be on the, on the hook for, take that out and then let's look at, you know, splitting fifty fifty. And so they have taken back to administration, you know, it, it should, like I said, I think it's sixty seven thousand, some, some and change. You know, I would say certainly north of sixty, sixty five, somewhere in that range to sixty seven. So. I, I think the numbers we've provided are fair.
So if they pay that, then we would.
We'd be like ninety seven would be our total. Right.
Okay.
We should have a meeting.
At three. I think it's at their office, actually.
Oh, that's right. I've got another meeting in three, I'll kind of do that.
I'm sure we'd work it out.
Clone yourself.
All right, got a motion, second, any other questions? Those favor. Pose, that's carries three point two. Discuss and consider approving Pacheco construction administration fee in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars. For Kilgore drainage.
So, so this is to ensure that it's done properly. So. Cliff Park, working for PK with Jim Roberts oversight, essentially. Is what's been overseeing the phase two construction services. So this is just. Inspection fee to allow them to oversee this construction that was just approved in three point one, the change of work. So.
Corey, I didn't think about it, but this ought to be pro rated also.
With K T N? Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, couldn't they, we'll discuss it.
We'll discuss it.
And then maybe get it along, maybe get a reimbursement on it.
Yeah, maybe just making it even seven. Right. Yeah.
Move for approval.
Say.
First by Commissioner Collins, second by Mr. Hammond. Any other questions? So the favor. Oh, it's mostly carries three point four, discuss considering working the text on. Or shall I stay in C Mont Belvieu to install traffic signal at F and fourteen oh nine Perry Avenue? Cory.
So as we've been working towards the, the completion of the project, the school district. Working on a new school on Gil on the, that basically is a Perry extension out by. Five sixty five, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, traffic. As we opened up fourteen oh nine, there's obviously a little bit of concern in, in the way we phased it and. Hoping that everybody would see it and stop. And, you know, as we opened up Perry and Gil first and then, and then later fourteen oh nine, but luckily we've, we've, you know, not had any issues. I think the, you know, everybody's enjoying the roadway being open. It has provided a good. Mobility for the, you know, alternate and that's going to increase as that bridge opens and traffic continues to bump up, but.
Get off thirty one eighty, a lot of folks that come north on fourteen oh nine.
Right. So it's just, it's hard, you know. Just. To know exactly. You, you were projecting numbers, but certainly don't want an issue. So there's been discussion about traffic signals potential at. At that intersection and also one at. Five sixty five and Gil Parkway. And I think the city and the school district are going to take the lead on that one. And there's been discussion of us taking the lead on the one at fourteen oh nine. I'm, I've started discussions with text dot. I've got a tentative meeting set up next week with City Mont Belvieu and text dot to do some coordination, depending on y'alls, you know, decision today. So we've. You know, I believe there'll be some extra money left over in the, the bond for this project. And so it's how to, you know, utilize that if, if y'all desire. So.
Yeah, and we've. Corey and I started this conversation last week thinking about the fact that we are going to have, we're all going to come in under budget, which is proud of. And how can we utilize those funds for, to improve the roadway that we're building fourteen oh nine? Because we can't use them on other roads. It's got to be for that project. Aaron asked that question to our bond council to make sure, you know, did we need to the change order for a little light there? How do we go through the process to get that done? So this is just the Corey starting to explore really not. You know, a form of action today.
So does it need a traffic warrant to get it?
Yes, any signal would, has to be warranted.
Will it warn now?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So it's.
Even though it's not a state highway yet.
Well, that's the thing. So I mean, so similarly, for instance, we, we, we did a signal warrant for Kilgore as it ties into thirty one eighty. And we're use projected traffic jet data. And so you, we're looking, you know, you, it, it's. Using engineering judgment essentially to, to make a determination. That one did warrant and. The county is going to be installing that traffic signal that text dot will oversee and maintain after we get it up.
We'll text that oversee and maintain this one.
They will. Well, I would think so unless the city desires to do it. You know, the city has taken in. Other, other signals within the city of Mont Belvieu, which is not the norm for a city of their size. For text dot, like the city of Baytown maintains their own signals, text dot pays them like a stipend to, to do that. And any, so that's for any city that's over fifty thousand in population. Obviously, City Mont Belvieu is considerably under that, but. They just desire to have some control and ensure that things are, you know, if there's maintenance issues on the weekends or during, they don't want to wait for text dot to get out there. You know, coming from Beaumont. So they, they basically just take that to ensure that they're kept to the standard that they desire. So. This being on a heavy school traffic route, I suspect it's likely that they, I think the city probably would, but I wouldn't want to speak for them, but.
Well, if they don't, text I share, it's going to be on state.
It would be a state highway. So regardless, it would be either the city or text up.
I think we definitely need it. So I go through their pretty much their morning at school time.
Yeah, it was three days morning on traffic.
Gonna be on your toes.
Right.
Yeah, you got to slow down when those lights come on from the.
Cause all new car, most of them new cars don't have blinkers on.
I've heard that. It's, it's probably, they're probably stuck on a truck or on a boat out in the, somewhere between China and here, right?
All right. What about a motion to. Give Corey authority work with text up works the last D C Mont. First by Mr. Tice, second by Mr. Hammond. Any other questions? Those favor, pose, most carriers.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. So no action on five point four. Thank for the update. Anything person? No, first thing one, first thing two. Number five, job descriptions. Okay. None, pressing three, go ahead. Okay. Fine.
About six, yeah.
Number six, payroll change. Executives. Who you want to talk about? Here.
No, just a mark head. I didn't see anything in there.
Let's see EMS and Sheriff's Office, job description.
I just had a question on thirty six and thirty seven. About the test kits. Why was, why is the county buying those? And we've been farming that out, haven't we?
Bill, I saw Bill here. I know we've had test kits for EMS for.
Good morning, thank you, Commissioners.
A question on thirty seven.
I just wondered what the test kits were for.
Those were COVID rapid antigen tests for employees and employee dependence for non first responders. The state provided, the federal government provided test kits for first responders, but not for their families and not for general employees testing.
So we'd have that available for county employees?
That's correct. At the wellness center and EMS.
So doesn't EMS fall under a different category for those?
I'm sorry, for EMS to, to test employees with. Yeah, they not there, not their employees, general testing, general employees. I'm not exactly sure where they did their testing at. I know they did some of their testing right here at the Anawack EMS station. Employees could go there. I don't know. We're on the west side. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So is this something we've been doing or?
In the past. Three months, yes, sir. Two or three months. When.
Would that initiative come from the state?
No, sir. I wish you came from the county because there was no means for us to test our own employees. And at the wellness center.
And at that point, there was not many places where you could get a test.
No, sir.
Understandable.
There were.
Lots of shortages and not, not a lot of places to get them.
Answer your question. Answer your question.
Yeah.
All right, what else?
That was the, I just wanted to, one thing about. Number thirty two, the shredder head on there. That's not something new. It's something we approved last year, Lee. Boring and just finally got.
Approved in budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was something that was on there last year and we tried to get it built and delivered and they just, I guess the COVID just couldn't get it done. And it's, so it's just now to the point to where we can actually make the purchase.
You need it?
No, that's it for me.
Commissioner Collins.
Are you sitting down, Judge? I don't have anything.
You been cloned? That's a first. I'm telling you, four years. All right, then we'll go to executive session. We don't need job descriptions. Okay. Now, I like to take most ones for the senate agenda. First by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Hammond, those in favor. Pose, most carries. Now executive session, twenty point one, personnel issues. Twenty point two, discuss itself first for the property. Still working on the, the purchase of property here for the justice. With that, it's ten thirty three AM. We will recess to executive session.
Alternate.
Oh.
Hi, James County District Court, come to order after executive session. It's now, what is that, 12:14 PM. No action out of executive session. So that, Commission Court, is adjourned at 12:14 PM.
Now I can go.